Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Indubisi Walla and I'm a senior at Fairmont Heights High School. I participated in the vigorous Biotechnology Science Magnet Program and have also taken over five Advanced Placement classes over my four-year tenure here at Fairmont Heights High School, including AP Calculus, AP Biology, AP English, and AP War History, and have also been able to maintain a GPA of 3.1. I enjoy giving back to my community by participating in community service activities which include, but are not limited to, cleaning up in the Landover Hills community and volunteering at the Department of Social Services in Landover, Maryland. I'm a nominee of the Privacy Scholarship as well as the Incentive Program at University of Maryland. If I'm awarded these scholarships, they will help me in my future plans to attend the University of Maryland College Park and major in computer engineering. My long-term goal is to become a computer hardware engineer for high-tech computer companies such as HP and Intel. I'm a proud senior at Fairmont Heights High School and I'm ready for college. Now, I would like to welcome you to the October 24th Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting. Highlights this evening will include: The News Break: Learning Takes Flight. Additionally, under New Business, the Board of Education will address the Board Policy 3500: Naming of New Schools: Additions of Portions of Buildings. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meeting and events. And now, without further ado, the October 24th Board of Education Meeting will begin. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 24th, 2013 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I'd like to, as I always do, remind folks to please turn off your wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and taping of the meetings and are also extremely annoying. Friends, I'd like to first thank that fine young man, Mr. Indubisi Iwala, 12th grader at Fairmont Heights High School. For the introduction of the board meeting this morning, Mr. Iwala noted that he is college-ready. That is the definition, my friends, of college and career-ready. He is the representation of the goal that we want to make sure every single one of our students exits high school from. Congratulations to you, young man, to your beautiful family, and to the brilliant educators at Fairmont Heights High School. All right. Mr. Valentine, would you please lead the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Please rise. Let us pray. O God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Mrs. Parker, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, Mr. Burrows, Ms. Epps, Ms. Eubanks, Ms. Higgins, Ms. Jacobs, Dr. Kaufman, Ms. Monday, Mr. Valentine, Ms. Waller, Ms. Muse Aria, Ms. Boston, Dr. Eubanks, thank you.
Thank you. Before I move to the minutes, I believe I have Ms. Higgins.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I was thinking doctor chair. I would make a motion to move public comment on non-agenda items currently 12.1 to, up on the agenda, to 4.2 after public comment on agenda items.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Ms. Higgins. That motion carries. Colleagues, prior to the adoption of the agenda, please note the following change: Discussion Item 6.1 FY 2013 Annual Audit Discussion has been removed from the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda for the October 24th, 2013 Board Meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the October 10, 2013 Board Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second? It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Epps?
Thank you. I'm trying not to say doctor chair, I'm sorry. On the minutes, I just wanted to ask if we can get, in future minutes, if we could get a synopsis of the CEO's remarks added?
A copy of the CEO's report. The highlights of the CEO's report added to the minutes? I see no problem with that. Do you see a problem with that, Mr. CEO?
No, sir, they're already a matter of public record when I read them, so it's not a problem.
Absolutely. I don't think we need a motion for that, so noted. We'll make that happen. Is there any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. All those opposed? The minutes have passed. Thank you very much. We will now move to item number 3.6, News Break. We'll have a news break entitled "Learning Takes Flight."
Did you have a good time today?
Yes.
Yeah, I could tell.
I'm Mr. Fabulous.
You are Mr. Fabulous. You'd call yourself Mr. Fabulous, too, if a helicopter landed on a high school football field especially for you. For Tariq Dawson, aka Mr. Fabulous, and his 39 other classmates in the CRI, or Community Referenced Instructional Class, at Bowie High, the arrival of a county police helicopter was part of a lesson they'll never forget. To prepare for the chopper's visit, the students had built helicopter models in their classroom the day before.
Pull this along the body, and there's a hole. Make sure it's inserted.
Wielding glue sticks, scissors, and coiled rubber bands, the students, with designated aides at their side, prepared their flying machines for what is always the ultimate test: Would the choppers get airborne? And while most of the students' birds never made it off the ground, one pilot, Kenny LeBoul, partially blind and hard of hearing, had to have felt like Orville and Wilbur Wright did in 1903, for he had liftoff and all the joy that went with it. When the real helicopter finally touched down, the parallels with the popsicle stick models were as obvious as the excitement on the students' faces. Ms. Salvador, was it worth it yesterday, what you did?
Yes, it was. It was really worth it because we, from this model that we made, you can see that there's, it's almost like the same except for the body.
With all the county's CRI students, all 900 of them from ages 5 to 12 in 33 separate schools, all striving to demonstrate mastery of the functional life skills they'll need, the helicopter visit was a perfect example of community-based learning.
This was an opportunity where this experience kind of touched all the senses of the kids. I mean, they didn't get a chance to touch it, but we could feel the helicopter. We saw the helicopter, we could hear the helicopter, which is so important when we have children with multiple disabilities and some, you know, intellectual disabilities. So it was absolutely wonderful.
For our CRI students, everything that they learn is about applications, about what they can actually apply to what's going on in the classroom. And this is phenomenal. The kids have been so excited, and I know that they are so happy and feel very special about the Police Department being here today.
We like to showcase our unit. We like to show the community, hey, we're out there, we're doing aerial surveillance for them. I mean, we do a lot of missions, but I mean, for these guys and girls, you know, this is a big thing for them, so we'd like to support the community any way we can, and this is one way we do it.
The heroic police officers and presence of the gleaming and gadget-filled helicopter notwithstanding, Kenny LeBoul was so intrigued by his own whirlybird that even as the $22 million one took off, he continued to put a spin on his own creation.
Let go, let go.
That's a great job. Great job indeed. Congratulations to all the CRI students for showing that whether their helicopters lifted off or not, they know how to fly straight into our hearts. This is Dave Zerber.
What another great example of the exciting learning opportunities available to every single one of our students in Prince George's County Public Schools. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item is the Chair's Report. I will start, as I do, offering a moment of silence for the friends and colleagues who are no longer with us. Please join me in a moment of silence for Mr. Gary Hall, who is a bus driver here in the system. Thank you very much for those thoughts. Okay, in my notes, in line with our capital improvement plan mission to deliver improved physical facilities to the Prince George's County School community to provide safe and healthy environments conducive to teaching and learning, Prince George's County Public Schools is excited to announce the recent groundbreaking ceremonies and opening ceremonies for Avalon Elementary School and College Park Academy, and the upcoming ceremonies for Dazwell E. Brooks Elementary and Oxon Hill High School. For those of you who have not had a chance to visit those beautiful facilities, please do get a chance to do so, so you can see the great things that we're doing here in Prince George's County. Before I go on with a few other notes on my report, I'd like to cede a bit of my time to one of my colleagues who's having an exciting event that I want to give her a chance to talk about, Ms. Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a moment to let everyone know about an event that I'll be hosting next Tuesday at Dr. Henry A. Wise High School. It is the first of three events that I'll be hosting for the year. It is called the District 7 Meet and Greet in Parent Partnership Forum. It will have, excuse me, Delegate Melanie Griffith, a part of the Maryland State Legislature, come out and talk about, from a legislative perspective, what she's doing to support education. Ernest Moore, President of the PTA Association, will also be there, and we'll be having a featured guest, Dr. Lonise Bias, to speak about parent involvement and why it's important. There will be food there, music there, and an opportunity for community members to have a great time. The date is, again, October 29th at 6:30 PM at Dr. Henry A. Wise High School, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monday, and thank you for the service that you're providing to the community. Let me give out a few kudos first to a student. Congratulations to Leah Woodley, Woody, of Bladensburg High School for being honored as the Prince George's County Public Schools Scholar of the Week. Leah is enrolled in the biomedical program and is a participant in the college awareness through the Career Exploration Program that is sponsored by the University of Maryland College Park. She's an avid volunteer and advocate for the less fortunate, having clocked over 385 student service hours assisting in the community. Boy, that's quite a few more than our required graduation requirement. That's serious community service there. Congratulations also to Jody Evans, a 5th grade student at Robert Goddard French Emergent School, for being selected to serve a second term on the Youth Advisory Board for the Alliance for a Healthier Generation. Jody's role as a board member is to initiate, Jody's role as a board member is to initiate healthy change within her school and her community. Congratulations. Jody, I want to give out one more shout-out. I'm guessing that Dr. Maxwell will talk about this a bit in his report, but yesterday I had the distinct pleasure and honor to visit Green Belt Middle School where the, where, what's the name of the foundation? The Wallace Foundation, of course, I've known it for years. The Board of Directors of the Wallace Foundation came, but I really, I'm sure that Dr. Maxwell will talk about that. I want to give a particular shout-out to the Principal of Green Belt Middle School, Mr. Warren Tweedy, who hosted the event. And what a tremendous story told. Many folks may know that we have a brand-new school at Green Belt Middle School and may attribute the great turnaround in Green Belt Middle to the new building, but you'd be mistaken in that assumption, because that turnaround happened before the opening of that new school, with Mr. Tweedy's leadership and changing the culture and getting students and parents engaged in learning in new and creative ways and seeing dramatic turnarounds in schools. And so I believe, like everyone else, that new buildings with the kind of technology that we need are an important factor, but our human resources, the human capital, the great teachers and principals and parents and committed students, that's what makes a great school, and there was nothing more prevalent for me than my visit to Green Belt Middle School on yesterday to prove that to me. Folks, a couple of upcoming events. November 21, 2013 is the System Oversight Meeting, where the topic is human resources. It happens at 1:00 PM. It'll happen here in the boardroom. Persons willing to speak at these meetings of the board must register with the Office of the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-925-6115. Couple of other things that are somewhat related, they're all related to education, that are just worth talking about. I will be supporting my friends and loved ones in DC on Saturday for the Alzheimer's Walk. If you have friends and loved ones who suffer, and I'm sure you do, in some kind of way, please do support that effort and join us. It's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'm dressed appropriately, you may notice, to honor that, so please pay attention to that. And also, one of my colleagues just shared with me that our county executive is going to host three public hearing meetings and listening sessions on Monday nights. The first one is October 28th at the Sports and Learning Complex in Landover. The second one is November 6th at Eleanor Roosevelt, and the third is November 13th at Potomac High School, all 7:00 to 9:00 PM on Monday. It will cover a whole range of issues. I'm asking each and every one of you, as education advocates, to go visit the county executive and make sure that education is part of that public hearing, and you tell him about all the great things going on here and what he needs to do to continue to support education in our district. At that, that concludes my report. What do I have? Oh, except for my light flashing. Ms. Epps, I want to see, give you a time, please.
Thank you. As you were giving your announcements, I also, if you don't mind, would like to make a quick announcement.
I do not mind in the least, ma'am.
The lovely ladies of Laurel are also doing a 5K walk in Laurel on Saturday, October 26th, 9:00 AM. The registration begins at 8:00 AM, and it's going to be Laurel Lake, which is 8,300 Mulberry Street, and there is a nominal cost to participate, and of course, this is in conjunction with the Susan G. Coleman Foundation, so, you know, we've got a rich slate of activities going on throughout the district, and, you know, support can be had everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Epps. All right. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for his report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin my remarks by thanking the many fathers and male role models who took part in the National Men Make a Difference Day on October 14th. More than 30 schools hosted special activities to encourage men to get involved in their children's education. We had a great show of support from the men in our community. Your involvement is critical as we all work together to make Prince George's County Public Schools the absolute best that they can be. Thank you again to all of you who participated. I'd like to take a moment next to introduce, at the last meeting, I acknowledged Dr. Denise Green, but she was at a principal's meeting, so I'd like Dr. Denise Green, one of our new associate superintendents, to be recognized. Denise, stand up and wave a minute. And Dr. Sito Narcisse just started this week. He gets to be here a couple days into his tenure, so, welcome, welcome to you as well. I think Dr. Eubanks said it very well about our Wallace Foundation visit to Green Belt Middle School, so I won't add a lot to that except to thank all of our central office staff who participated and helped with that work, and add my congratulations to the school-based folks, the principal and teachers and everyone that made that possible, the student classrooms that we visited were just awesome, and to the Wallace Foundation for bringing pretty much their entire Foundation Board here to Prince George's County to see the work that we're doing. If you haven't already done so, I also encourage you to review my entry plan for the first six months as Chief Executive Officer. Document is available on our website and focuses on five primary goals: To ensure teaching and learning produces students who are prepared for college and careers; Second, to transform community trust by building relationships and providing transparent communication; Third, to create an organizational structure staffed with a skillful team focused on teaching and learning; Fourth, to align resources to school system priorities; and finally, to establish a transition team to conduct a review of the school system. This past week, in fact, I announced the 32 members of the transition team, which will be co-chaired by Dr. Lilian Lowry, Maryland State Superintendent of Schools, and Dr. Charlene Duke, President of Prince George's Community College. Members of the new transition team represent all of our stakeholders in education, including students, teachers, principals, administrators, unions, higher education, and community partners. This group will be assisting me in the process of meeting my goals for the school system. This past Monday was our first meeting, and we will also meet over the next two months. The team will prepare a report and present their findings in December. The transition team plays a key role in determining what needs to be done to move our school district forward. They will also be looking at our organizational structure, processes, and operations to ensure that we are using best practices and operating efficiently and effectively. For the latest updates on the process, you can visit our website. Our new charter public school, College Park Academy, as Dr. Eubanks mentioned, celebrated its opening with a ribbon-cutting ceremony this past Monday. There was a strong show of support from the community. They were joined by Governor Martin O'Malley, Congressman Steny Hoyer, State Senator James Roseppep, County Executive Sharon Baker, College Park Mayor Andy Fellowes, District 3 Board Member Amber Waller, District 2 Board Member Peggy Higgins, and the University of Maryland President Wallace Lowe. I'd like to thank all of them for their support, and Principal Bernadette Ortiz Brewster and her staff and students for hosting the event. If you're looking for a fun, free activity that also builds your child's science skills, join us for Family Night, Family Science Night, at the Howard B. Owen Science Center in Green Belt this Friday from 6:00 to 8:30. The event will kick off the center's 35-year anniversary celebration with the theme Then, Now, and Beyond. Take part in hands-on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics activities. Learn more about the live animals that live at the center and see a planetarium show and tour the Challenger Center. Last, as a reminder, families in Board District 7 are encouraged to come to a parent partnership forum on October 29th at Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School, and the entire school district is invited to attend the academic showcase at Eleanor Roosevelt High School on October 30th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM to learn more about all the latest academic options available to students in Prince George's County. Thank you, Dr. Eubanks.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Before we move on, I want to go back to my report. One other acknowledgement I should have made, those who might be paying attention, I saw in a newspaper a few weeks ago, Prince George's County Public Schools and Board of Education has recently joined an exciting partnership with the Panasonic Foundation. Panasonic Foundation works with districts across the country, and what excites us so much about this group is their commitment to issues of social justice and equity and their skilled knowledge and expertise in working with boards and CEOs and districts and to really help focus them on those things that are most important about academic achievement and student success. So I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Larry Leverett and Dr. Barbara Anderson, who are with us here today for their first visit in what was going to be what we hope to be a long and exciting and fruitful partnership. Thank you very much. Make sure that I mention, and I want, I need to mention, a little birdie told me to mention what a great partnership this is with Panasonic that is funded through the Panasonic Foundation's generous contributions to the board. Thank you very much for that. All right. That covers it? All right. Item number 4.0, Public Comment on Agenda Items and Non-Agenda Items. We will start this evening with public comment speakers on agenda items. Once again, the board will listen to your comments but cannot address your comments. All speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation at the sound of the buzzer. You may please complete that last sentence only, and you may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to a registered or unregistered individual, and we ask that you be relatively nice to us, and we will listen to you very carefully, or something like that that it says here. All right, so we will start with public agenda item on item 10.1, the core text adoption for mathematics, Algebra II, and Mr. David Kahn.
I always try to be nice to you. Well, we finally know what these books are going to cost, and that's $550,000, and together with the geometry books, we're looking at tonight more than $1.3 million. Considering the budget's the only thing of substance left for this board to do, I hope you'll pay a lot of attention to these two items. These amounts were known weeks ago, and they just showed up on board docs yesterday, but so be it. We don't know a lot of things about this. The predecessor textbooks, the ones that are in use this year, we don't know when they were bought or how long they were supposed to last. If they're on their last legs, this may be a very provident purchase. If not, then the question arises, what are these supplanting? What were we going to buy with this money that we're not? And what do we do with the useful life of the textbooks that are now not going to be used? Or can the teachers teach Common Core with supplementary materials until it's time for the old textbooks to come up and be retired? Is there a market for the old textbooks where we can recover some of this money? None of this is spelled out here. What's also not said is what the superintendent or CEO wants you to do about these textbooks. It's a recitation of facts about them, but there's no resolution attached. Imagine the chair at some point will say, may I have a resolution, please? Or a motion, please? And somebody will say, so move. So move what? There's nothing here to move. So I hope that if there are any motions on these items, that they will be well-spelled I think there's a problem with getting enough information in a timely fashion to the board and to the public. These may be great. I don't know whether there are less expensive ones, but the committee has decided that these are the ones they want to recommend. And I'm not knocking the textbooks. It's the way we're going about purchasing them with very little knowledge on the part of the school board, on very little knowledge on the part of the public, and it's hard to say whether these are a good deal, whether we're doing this the right way. I hope these questions will be answered in the discussion that you're going to have in a little while. Thank you very much.
We will now move on to public comment speakers on non-agenda items. We have five registered speakers for public comment on non-agenda items this evening. Again, the same holds true for your instructions as for our previous speaker. So we will start, I believe, with Delegate Alonzo Washington. Is he here? He's not here. Okay, great. Well, then we go on to our next speaker is Gina Bowler.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here. My name's Gina Bowler from Upper Marlboro District 9. I have two preschool-aged children. I'm also a co-founder of a grassroots group called My Bilingual Child. I would like to thank the CEO for public statements in recent days that reflect support for Spanish immersion to be added among the specialty programs offered by Prince George's County Public Schools beginning next year. As the CEO and his team and the Board of Education review, evaluate, and approve Spanish immersion options, please keep the following points in mind. First, more than one model, one school, one location is justified. The need and demand for Spanish, English-Spanish bilinguals is great, as is the demand for Spanish immersion schools. Our county is diverse and large. We need options that are attractive and accessible, logistically feasible to families throughout the county. Second, be generous in setting eligibility requirements for enrollment. For instance, the first year that schools are open, consider allowing kindergarteners through the second grade to enroll rather than just kindergarteners only. Families are rightfully concerned that their children will age out of eligibility for these immersion schools. Third, engage parents before the options are announced as final. Host parent-focused, interactive meetings. Include PowerPoints, fact sheets, Q&amp;A, perhaps some video clips of Spanish immersion classes in action. Convene a panel of principals, teachers, parents, students affiliated with immersion schools, Spanish immersion schools in particular, and allow time for the audience to ask questions. My Bilingual Child hosted a community survey with our very limited resources in late summer, early fall. The purpose was to help us assess support for Spanish immersion in our county. Ninety-four Prince Georgians responded to our online survey that we pushed out through listservs and our website and a few online community newspapers. The highlights of the results are that we asked people to rate their knowledge about language immersion programs in schools. 14% said no knowledge, 58% said limited knowledge, 28% said very knowledgeable. We asked, "Is it important for your child to become fluent in a second language?" 100% said yes. We asked, "Would you like Spanish immersion to be added among the specialty programs offered by our school district?" 97% said yes. So I invite parents and community members to continue voicing their support for Spanish immersion before this board. Another way to do that is our online petition. I have flyers on the table in the back with the link to that petition. You can access it from our website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Laron Allen. It's Laron Allen here. Mr. Allen, okay. Up next then is Mr. James McDowell. Mr. McDowell, are you available here? All right, Mr. McDowell. How about Donna Beehe? Is Donna here? All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I've been here several times before. My name is Donna Beehe, and I'm the school counselor at Greenbelt Elementary and Berwyn Heights Elementary. I brought tonight, I'd like to bring your attention to a recently published document called "A Framework for Safe and Public Schools." This was a joint collaborative effort done by six national education organizations. This task force was put together at the request of President Obama in response to the recent increase in mass school violence. We just, a few days ago, had another horrible incident. The report is very extensive, and it'd be difficult for me to summarize here in, you know, three minutes, so I brought copies for each of you that I'm going to leave here for you. I'm going to go over a few points, though, that again emphasize how important it is to have an integrated and effective school counseling program in every school. This report cites eight best practices. All of them could not be delivered without involvement of school counselors. I'll highlight three of them now. Best practice number three, improve access to school-based mental health supports by ensuring adequate staffing in terms of school-employed mental health professionals who are trained to infuse prevention and intervention services into the learning process. Best practice number four, integrate an ongoing positive climate and safety efforts with crisis prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. And best practice number five, balance physical and psychological safety to avoid overly restrictive measures like armed guards and metal detectors that can undermine the positive learning environment. Efforts should be focused on enhancing a positive school climate, building trusting relationships in order to encourage students and adults to report potential threats. Counselors who are in the school on a daily basis are instrumental in making these types of things a part of the school culture. The study concludes with a section called " roles of key leadership personnel regarding school safety and climate." The three points of leadership are the school principal, school-based mental health professionals, and school resource officers. I was talking to a friend about this report the other day, and they kind of made an interesting observation. They pointed out that it was kind of like a three-legged stool, each leg being crucial to the stool's stability. Without a leg, the stool falls over. So school counselors are kind of like the third leg in that stool. We cannot afford to allow our schools to be missing that crucial component to its stability and to its safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last call for Laron Allen or James McDowell. Are you in the room? Okay, then that concludes public speaking on agenda and non-agenda items. Thank you all for your participation. There are no legislative agenda items or discussion items this evening, so we'll move on to Agenda 7.0, the consent agenda. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of item number 7.1 under the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item 7.01 is before the board for approval of a multi-year agreement with Prince George, between Prince George County Public Schools and Marlo Sports Incorporated for purchase of sports uniforms for our middle and high schools.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. May I have a motion to approve item number 7.1 under the consent agenda?
Still moved.
It has been moved. May I have a second? It has been properly moved and seconded to approve item 7.1 under the consent agenda. I see discussion. Mr. Burrows.
Dr. Maxwell, this appears to be a contract awarding high school, middle school gym uniforms to a particular contractor, but I don't see any budget implication. Why is that? This is a contract purchasing uniforms. Why is there no monetary amount attached?
Do you mind if we ask Earl Hawkins to come forward? Thank you.
No. I agree. There isn't a budgetary amount there because it's up to the schools based on the needs of the schools, I should say. If cheerleaders need uniforms, then the cheerleaders will go and they will purchase them at a 41% discount from Marlo Sports. So what they do is they actually give us a pricing off of the retail price.
And so is there a cap on funding, or is there a way to ensure that?
Well, basically, we give the schools a certain amount of money in an allotment every year. That money is then budgeted or spread out with the programs at the schools, the different sports programs. Uniforms are usually purchased on a four- to five-year basis, so if a team buys them this year, they might not get them again for another four years unless they raise the money for those uniforms. And then they would go to Marlo Sports and purchase those at a discount. So that's the way it actually works.
That makes sense. I'm just trying to figure out why that amount is not attached to this award contract.
It isn't because there really is no way to do that, because you're talking about 22 high schools, you're talking about football teams, varsity JV. Schools may pay anywhere from a range of $30 to $40 for a jersey, also for these pants. There are different price ranges based on what the school would want. So it's not really a way that I could set a price based on the coaches and what they needed for their specific schools.
And I just want to add that each school has a varying number of athletes. So at one school, they might have 12 cheerleaders, or another one might have 20.
Right.
So the amount would vary per school.
I know. I mean, that makes sense. What you're saying makes sense. I'm just struggling voting for, it seems like a blank check.
So let me, if I might just interject, let me make, let me ask a couple clarifying questions for myself. So do I understand that you said that each school gets an athletic appropriation?
Yes, they do. They get an athletic allotment, then that allotment is spread out between each team.
Right, so the school makes a decision.
Yes.
I remember when I was a high school principal here, we make a decision on which team has which needs, who's getting new uniforms this year or next year, and it comes out of that allotment that's appropriated from the athletic fund. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then if I need more than that, then my boosters club or whoever helps me raise money to make up the difference.
That is correct.
So there's no, other than the athletic appropriation, which, does that come from revenue? Does that come from ticket sales and other sources?
Well, the allotment comes from what my budget, what I'm budgeted every year. We give the schools a set amount. And then on top of that, the schools get to keep their football, I mean, basketball gate receipts, their JV gate receipts for all sports. That also goes into the pot, and they can use those monies as well as any booster club or other fundraising monies that they receive.
So if they assume, if an individual school assumes any financial liability beyond what you appropriate them with the athletic budget, then they raise money for that, and so there's no additional requirement from the school district?
There is none.
Thank you.
I just want to add that that revenue does come from the football gate receipts that goes, that's distributed amongst all the high schools.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure, so this is not expanding the category of allotment? This is simply saying that if you're going to buy uniforms, do it through this company?
That's correct, and we're getting a better pricing because of the 41% discount which you would not normally get.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
I want to, just a quick follow-up from my own understanding. Are we now then signing an exclusive contract for them so that all the schools must go to this group for their athletic uniform needs, or do the schools have options?
They have options based, well, there actually should be two. BSN is not on the, it should be BSN Sports as well as Marlo Sports. I believe there are two. There are two companies, so they have a choice between the two, and these companies sell various manufacturers such as Nike, Under Armour, the whole gamut. So they have choice between those two, so it's not exclusive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. There are no budget consent agenda items this evening, and there are also no non-consent agenda items this evening. So we'll move on to item number 10.0, unfinished business, second readers. Colleagues, we are now at the point of approving items 10.1 to 10.3 under governance unfinished business. And before I see a motion, I do have Ms. Higgins. You want to wait till the motion?
No, we can wait. I'll make the motion that we.
Okay. All right, well, let's start then. May I have a motion to approve items 10.1 to 10.3 under governance unfinished business, second readers?
I made the motion.
Yes, there is a motion. May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And now, Ms. Higgins.
Thank you. Dr. Maxwell, you have explained some of the issues in regards to the textbooks, and I know that there was some public comment in regards to that. I'm wondering if you could provide that information for the public as well.
So I can do my best. First, let me be clear that what you're being asked to do tonight is approve the textbooks for use. The budget was appropriated as part of the fiscal budget for fiscal year 14, correct, gentlemen? And so this is the, you know, approval of the books for use, but the money, again, was approved. So the question's about, you know, approving the budget and what's the implication? You approved a textbook budget as part of fiscal 14 annual budget. There were some questions, again, about, you know, who looked at them and those kind of things, and Dr. Arbor, Gaston, others can speak to the content of the books better than I can, so I won't do any of that. As for the timeline questions that we've been asked about when to do this, the procedures for the school system were not followed adequately in the case of the first two items on the agenda, the mathematics, Algebra II, and the geometry textbook adoption. They were approved back in the spring, but there was a delay in bringing to the board. The purchasing office did approve the purchase of the books and had them delivered to the school district and to the schools in advance of the approval of the textbooks by this board. We're still asking for the approval of the books. Should you not do that, then we'll have to explore our other options. But again, the money was appropriated, the books have been reviewed according to the procedure and the, you know, the process of the committee reviewing them. Those are folks who are practitioners in the field, who know the content area and the math. So in the case of the third one, we allowed students to register for a course, be scheduled into the course, assigned a teacher to the course, and the class at one of our schools was told that they didn't have an approved textbook for the course, and so on an emergency basis for a classroom set of textbook, I authorized the purchase of a classroom set of textbooks for the AP Comparative Government and Politics. You're welcome.
Okay, I have Ms. Muse Aria.
Oh, hello. I have a quick question. From a broader perspective, since the implementation of these new books are following the introduction of Common Core, what is the expected date that we can see the improvement of students' test scores from Common Core?
Dr. Arbor, Gaston, I'm going to.
Good question. Algebra II and geometry don't have a state test, but they will be assessed with the PRC assessments. This year, we'll have a field test. There was actually a question from a board member this morning that I thought was very thoughtful, and the question was, as we transition to Common Core with multiple textbooks, where do we see the gaps? And in my response, I said that there are actually, particularly with math, there are two things to be looking at for the approval of textbooks. One is references to the math practices, which are not referenced in books prior to the adoption of the Common Core, so that's one thing we look for. The second thing, and really went to the question of the board member, was what happens with the realignment of the content and what happens with the holes? And there are two subjects that we think are particularly impacted by the switch to the Common Core. One was fifth-grade math, and the other one is Algebra I. We're seeing, you probably took HSA Algebra, and Algebra I and HSA Algebra are very, very different courses. And what we've seen is things that were normally taught in geometry and Algebra II have now been pushed down into Algebra I. So Algebra I is the course that we're most concerned about as far as test scores, and that is assessed by HSA. With full implementation of the Algebra I, we actually expect HSA performance to increase because it's a much more rigorous course. But what I think we have to do is we're going to have to monitor GPA and student grades in these courses because it's a little bit more demanding. The geometry book and the Algebra II book that you're looking at today are more referenced in Common Core, but not as, you're not going to see as significant a shift from the old geometry and the old Algebra II. It's Algebra I that we're really watching. So how do we address that? So we actually buy a textbook, but we actually write a curriculum too. And we write the curriculum, and then we buy the textbook that matches closely. No textbook will be 100% matched to our curriculum, and the textbook sequence isn't always the same sequence that we would do in our curriculum, so teachers actually have to move around. So they have to refer to our curriculum and use the textbook as a guide rather than, the textbook is not the curriculum. Does that make sense? So that's what we're really trying to address here. So over a period of full implementation, remember, our kids who are now entering third grade are the first cohort that actually have had Common Core since kindergarten. So I think we're going to have to take some time to see that move through. And as I had mentioned in a previous. And as I had mentioned in a previous board meeting, when Kentucky moved to Common Core assessments, they saw a 30-point drop in proficiency. And the rest of the country is looking at Kentucky's experience and assuming that their model, what happened in Kentucky is probably going to be consistent with what happens across the rest of the country.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. Dr. Arbogast, you and I also exchanged an email this morning about the composition of the textbook committees. Those who are tasked with making recommendations to you and the board on one book over another after the, the school system has made a determination that this book is needed. And I asked whether we had a parent or a student, and you mentioned there is a parent, which I'm very happy about. What do you think about putting a student on that committee? What are the pros and cons to having the people who are going to be using these textbooks contribute to which textbooks we choose and which books they'll be using for the next couple of years?
So you just asked for my opinion. So this whole episode and going through the board action summaries, listening to Dr., I mean, Mr. Khan's comments, clearly, I think we need to review our policy and then, and we need to follow it. And where there are adjustments needed in the policy, we need to make those, which goes to the composition of the committee. Student member. So here would be the question that I would ask myself. Would we want a student member for an elementary text? Or would we want a student member for a high school text? And those are the kind of things that I think we'd have to, to kind of sift through. I could actually see that it makes a lot of sense to have a student member, like a senior in high school, looking at high school text. I'm not sure I see the sense of having a senior looking at an elementary text or having an elementary student. That, that doesn't quite make sense to me. But I, but I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying and I, and I'm looking at, of course, at our student board member, thinking her opinion and people, the opinion of people like her could be really valuable when we're selecting texts at that high school level.
No, no, I would agree. My question was, once the committee has gone through a level of scrutiny, saying both these two, three, four books meet a minimum standard that we've set, teachers have looked at them, parents, administrators, having a student, whether it be a senior at high school or any other level, to contribute, I think would be effective. They are not going to be the first line or have the final say, but their contribution and them being able to say, this is a document that I believe will be most effective in helping me to learn the best. I think having that contribution would be incredibly helpful. And it gives students the, the sense of empowerment that they've had, they've had some say in that.
My, my only comment would be that in my own experience in textbook adoption committees, it's really helpful to sit through all the meetings because then you hear what the, the criteria at the beginning and then you lay out that criteria. So coming in at the end doesn't give you the full benefit of looking at all the things that you took into consideration. But, but I'm really intrigued by that, by your idea. And I, and I think there might be room for them to make that work.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Ms. Epps.
I actually had another question, but I want to stay on my colleagues mentioning about how we use, not use, but how, the input that we get from students with regard to materials and how they're being taught. I do think that it is worth exploring. It is incredibly intriguing because there's something to be said even from a focus group perspective. And even if you have students who are in the pipeline and they've come through and been taught the material, they can kind of, they may, the student or student's perspective could actually add to discussions around professional development and how best to, you know, roll out the implementation of the textbook. So I definitely think that we're at the beginning of a, of a, of a conversation about how to look at this differently. And, and I think that 21st century education actually is missing more of the student voice. Because I think that they are, in a lot of ways, more sophisticated than we give them credit for and have the ability to weigh in on things. Because even to your point about them, someone coming in on the tail end, you know, without the perspective of the criteria, well, that's exactly what's happening every day in classrooms. So I think that, you know, that can actually be used as an asset. My question, I just wanted to, from your initial comments, Dr. Arbogast, is are we in full implementation of Algebra I? And if not, when will we get there?
Yes, we're in full implementation of Algebra I.
Okay, thank you.
But there is, there were a lot of things we had to add to the curriculum because of the holes that you had asked about earlier today.
And I think that brings me back to my, our earlier point about, you know, student input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. Mr. Burrows.
I'd like to call the question on 10.1, 2, and 3.
After?
After people buzzed and buzzed in.
Okay. After, after our current, after we get through our current queue? Okay, thank you for that clarification. Ms. Jacobs.
I just want to be clear. These books have already been purchased and are already in the classrooms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. The question's been called. Ms. Parker, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr., Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Epps.
Aye.
Ms. Uvanks.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
No.
Dr. Kaufman?
Aye.
Ms. Monday?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller? Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Uvanks?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, colleagues. We'll now move on to agenda item 11.0, new business first readers. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 11.1 to 11.3 under new business first readers.
The financial review as of September 30th, board policy on naming of schools 3500 and board policy 1500 on the Parent and Community Advisory Council are for the board as first readers, not requiring discussion.
This, so this doesn't require discussion. Mr. Burrows, are you trying to get in on this non-discussion, discussion item? I just want to make sure if you're going back to something different because we can't really discuss this.
Well, according to policy 9360, it doesn't require discussion, but it also doesn't prohibit discussion. Here's the policy here. I'd like to pull 11.1.
What, what's your request?
To discuss 11.1, financial review as of September 30th, 2013.
First, well, before I move any further, that's a motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded. Ms. Battle, I need a ruling on this. Ms., I should mention to the crowd, as I mentioned in the back room.
I don't think it's a motion. I think somebody.
Okay. All right. Well, either way, I, I just need clarity because our, our board attorney, Ms. Hairston, is, is not here today, so, and I'm a rookie. I'm just still trying to figure out whether or not we can pull first readers for discussion on something that's supposed to not have discussion. I'm glad to hear from my colleagues too.
The past chair is here. If you want.
Yeah, I heard you. I just, see if she has, if she knows. If not, we'll move forward.
Or I can, I can read the policy directly. Policy 9360.
Well, let me just, if she has an opinion, otherwise you don't have to do that, Edward. We'll just, we'll just go on ahead.
Right.
I believe it.
I agree with his interpretation.
Beautiful. Okay, so item number 11.1 is pulled. Why don't we entertain then a motion for items 11.2 and 11.3?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items number 11.2 and 11.3 under new business first readers. Please, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. We're in a discussion on item 11.1, financial review as of September 30th, 2013. Mr. Burrows, you have the floor.
Thank you. I guess this is for Dr. Maxwell, Mrs. Sharon. This is just questions that I'd like to have answered before second reader. On page one of, actually, it's on page 204, says the Office of the Chief Human Resources and three FTEs. I'd like to know what those FTEs are, what their function, you know, the functions of those, of those FTEs. Like an explanation of why you're requesting the additional funding for.
Tell me where you are.
I'm on page, the 2 of 4 at the top. Says Office of the Chief of Human Resources and three FTEs. And before second reader.
I got it.
I'd just like to know what those FTEs are and their functions. For security services and for FTEs, I would like to know where, once again, what those functions are, how are you going to place those individuals, what's the rationale behind that? For the additional funds with the diversity officer and the chief of staff, you know, completely understand that, but it's almost $700,000. Just like to have a better idea of what that support and with that office is going to look like and what those functions are going to look like. The art teachers and 10 FTEs, the distribution of, you know, who goes where and that sort of thing to ensure equity and just to better understand what your goal is and, and how you plan to place those individuals.
I'll be happy to address this, Mr. Burrows. Good evening, Board. Dr. Maxwell. The financial review, just in terms of, before I get to the specifics, is again a, a function of looking at the, the financial plan during the, during the preceding months and making adjustments when we get feedback from a, from a variety of quarters throughout the school system. There are about 26 individual additions. This is coming to the board first for, for consideration. If the board would approve these, a variety of these cross-function, so we would have to then request a hearing by the county council for subsequent action because this would then, you know, need to balance the budget per the appropriation ordinance. The, the first item you mentioned about the Office of the Chief of Human Resources, the FTEs, those are for a newly created employee performance office. I believe that's going to be focusing on principal evaluation.
Principal and teacher evaluation, both of them, which, you know, you know, the system had a plan approved by the state for teacher and principal evaluation as was required. And we don't really have, we had a committee, you know, working together with our labor organizations on, you know, what that was going to look like, how it was. But there's some work to be done now on the actual forms, the process, the training and all those kind of pieces. And so Mr. Ryan and people that will be in that room with him will be working on, you know, getting the rest of the work done to, to support the principal, teacher, principal and teacher evaluation effort.
Okay. Going forward with the question about the, the security services, this is another item, an example where the executive cabinet receives feedback from supporting services relative to the workload demands across the different schools. And in, and so security services evaluating their, their work plan and the amount of requests they're getting for assistance and support, put forward the business case to increase the FTE allotment in that regard. The specific locations of where those FTEs would be assigned, I don't have that. This basically increases the FTE allotment for that division. And I think, you know, during the, the normal course of any given week, they rotate staff around as needed to address concerns. They all probably have a home location or school. But as the needs of the school system and the student body requires adjustment and assistance, they then surprise, provide that support.
And I also think that schools are allowed through school-based management to buy some of their own. And you have to then realign the, you know, the funding from school-based management sources. You have to actually, you know, hire the, the folks.
I think the next item you mentioned was the art teachers.
Yes, the 10.
The, the art, the art teacher item is on there in terms of a, a multi-step approach. We know that we have 15 instructional directors and that we've heard, we've heard direct feedback that arts education is important. It's important to the, to Dr. Maxwell, it's important to the board, it's important to the instructional community. To try to deal with it in a phased approach, we looked at what the resources were available, trying to put at least one more art FTE in 10 of the instructional director areas. And then hopefully, as we move forward into FY15, we could add another, another allotment that would, that would round that up to at least 15. So again, it's another commitment to look at the resources we have and redirect them in the best way that we can to support education.
You know, that also makes sense. I just find it somewhat interesting that, you know, it seems like these are, I mean, clearly is a budget initiative. And, you know, several budget initiatives in the document. And it kind of echoes the conversation that the board's been having lately about how do we support schools and start by having that budget conversation early. But it seems like they're budget initiatives that are occurring in the middle of the fiscal year. And that definitely sounds like one of them. Yeah, you know, the majority of these make perfect sense. I don't disagree with any of them. Just that when you have a document with millions of dollars, it's important that I have full clarity before voting, you know.
Surely.
Aye or nay? Thanks.
Y'all set, Mr. Burrows?
Aye. Thank you for your indulgence.
All right. Well, thank you for that clarity. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. I have a couple of follow-up questions as well. Let's go to what the expenditures are. I was wondering about the student-based budgeting, the $2 million for student-based budgeting.
Yes, ma'am.
How's that to be allocated?
Yeah, that, that allocation, when the, when the classroom balancing activities were taking place, as well as just the, the classroom, or I should say, the school visits that Cabinet has made and as that, and as the instructional leaders are talking to instructional directors, talking with principals, and Dr. Maxwell's been going out and about and visiting a lot of sites. The feedback that we've gotten is that through the, the student-based budgeting process, because of the, the, the amount of resources that we have available and requiring the schools to buy instructional staff, it's a, it's a tight process. There's not a whole lot of extra money. So we ran a report to find out on a school-by-school basis, what was the available discretionary resources that were left at the schools. And once we saw that list and we had ranked it, you know, high to low, that, we brought that to Cabinet. And so we're taking some additional money and funding it.
I'm fully supportive of money going directly to the schools. I think that's great. My, I guess my question's even more narrow. Is the $2 million being spread among the 205 schools? Or are they certain schools that have been identified as?
I believe the report was for all 205 schools, but I don't, I'm, was it just elementary?
The way we did it is each school got their school-based budgeting. And then we looked essentially for areas that were really looking problematic.
Yes, right. Didn't fit the formula.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, sometimes an algorithm doesn't work if you have too many kids in a second grade.
Sure.
And that's where a lot of the money went.
Okay, so this is to correct things so that nobody's harmed and fix problems that exist with the formula?
The, the other thing that Mr. Sharon didn't mention is that schools had lost enrollment and could have lost, there were schools that lost enrollment and could have lost more money. Once we got to a certain point, we were reticent to take money away from schools. So we could have tried to balance it that way, but. So, we could have tried to balance it that way, but that's really painful to lose money once the school starts.
I understand. Okay. And then, I guess my other question has to do with the interscholastic athletics. I know that the board approved, I think it was $1.1 million for scholastics. Is that, now, we're doing another $625,000, or am I reading what we approved last time incorrectly? Inter-scholastic has to do within the school?
I'm just adding, this was equipment, and the previous was for uniforms.
Oh, no, we're talking about the previous for middle school athletics that we approved before. Is this a different issue?
No, I apologize. This is just in addition to and providing equipment for new requirements as it relates to concussion.
So, this is tied, then, to the middle school athletics initiative that we approved?
No, it's high school.
It's high school?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. And then, if I could quickly look at the changes in the review transfer on this document here, as to the ones where there were savings, the administration, $4.8 million of savings, instructional salaries, $3.7 million. Just if you could tell us where these savings came from?
The vast majority of the savings came from salaries and benefits that were budgeted in those categories.
Okay.
And with lapse, they were freed up in terms of a projection.
Okay.
So, when he says lapse, you know, we have a vacant position, and it's vacant for a period of time before we fill it or we start a school year shy some staff members, and yet, it's appropriated, but that money is there and not being spent. So, that's what he means by lapse.
Okay, thank you. The $594 million for the, I'm sorry, $594,000 for textbooks and instructional, does that mean we don't need textbooks or? And I'm not trying to get in the weeds here, I'm just trying to understand. We returned some books. It says textbooks and instructional materials. Now, I understand we're talking about $594,000 and a $24 million, $24.7, but that certainly also would be a lot of books. And if that's, if I'm catching you too short, I'll be fine.
Yeah, I'm looking for that, I just don't see that.
This'll be fine for the second reader. I don't mean to hold things up.
I will get an answer to you.
That sounds fine. Thank you very much. That's in fixed charges. We had, and then the, that's fine for second reader to do it, the textbooks, and then the $5 million in the food service, not food services, that was in the fixed charges category. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't, I don't have the answer for that.
Oh, I'm ready to vote, yeah.
Make sure, ask about the fixed charge one again, see if that's a now or if they need time for that.
Yeah, there were two. The fixed charges, $4.9 million.
Right. In that fixed charges line is the, is a cost center that captures a lot of benefits. So, when I mention salaries and benefits, that's one of the benefit areas.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And we're just waiting on the textbook one, and that can be fine for second reader.
I'll be happy to provide that information, but I don't have the specific answer right now.
Okay, that's fine. No problem.
Okay, I see no other discussion now. May I have a motion to accept Item 11.1 as a first reader?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It has been accepted. Thank you, colleagues. Item 13.0, follow-up items, follow-up items from the October 10th, 2013 board meeting are posted in board docs for your review. Item 14.0 is a motion to confirm actions taken in executive session. Colleagues may have a motion to confirm actions taken in executive session on Thursday, October 24th, 2013.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It has been probably moved and seconded to the board, that the Board of Education hereby approves actions taken in executive session in October, on October 24th, 2013, and are as follows: labor negotiation matters, legislative matters, personnel appointments, personnel matters, legal matters, and administrative matters. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Am I missing something? Then, if I'm not missing anything, I see no buttons ringing, I see nobody telling me that I missed any important items on the agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn October 24th, 2013 board meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ladies and gentlemen, we adjourned. Have a great evening.